Well, good afternoon. We're going to get started. It's a pleasure to have you here today in Montpelier at our town meeting about regional affordability. I understand I'm also being broadcast online. So, welcome to the folks who were perhaps not able to make it here to Montpelier but who are willing and able on this beautiful day in New England to check in and share in this conversation with us. We have a fairly straightforward process that we're going to use this afternoon. My colleagues with me here today, Ed McNamara all the way on the right, our planning director, and Mr. Nguyen, our financial and economics director at the Department of Public Service, will be supporting me, their commissioner of the Department of Public Service, in facilitating this conversation with you folks today. The two gentlemen I just mentioned are going to give a brief presentation to set the table for our conversation about regional affordability, but before they do, I just thought I'd make a few remarks. The purpose of this meeting is to hear from folks like you, your thoughts, unmitigated, unvarnished, uncensored, unprocessed, about regional electricity affordability. And the reason this is of particular interest to us is that, in addition to regulating utilities here in the state and participating in a process that sets the amounts that you folks pay for electricity in Vermont, my department also has a significant role to play as an emissary of Vermont in regional conversations at the Independent Assistant Operator New England's meetings, for instance, or in other regional organizations such as NESCO, which is the New England Committee on Electricity, States Committee on Electricity, and in other groups such as NECPUC, which is a consortium of commissions that regulate utilities in Vermont. In these organizations and fora, discussions are ongoing about what unites us as New England states and what connects us as New England states and our shared fate as New England states as we seek to make sure that you folks have reliable and safe energy and that it's provisioned adequately, including during very difficult seasons such as winter peak cold seasons like we experienced this past year. Those conversations are wholesome, they are also robust, and at times very difficult as they are right now because different states have different needs that have to be met as we all come together to manage the grid that services all of us. And we all have to make sure that our voices get heard. And while I could spend time talking about what Massachusetts' needs are, or what Connecticut's needs are, or New Hampshire's needs are, I'm sure you'll join me in recognizing that first and foremost, my focus on behalf of the Scott administration has to be what Vermont's needs are. And Vermont, of course, has the need like everyone else to have reliable and safe electricity, but we also have a pronounced need to have affordable electricity. And that has been a particular focus of mine in my term as commissioner in the conversations that I've been having at the regional level. I have found it very interesting to see how uncommon it is for regulators to mention affordability in those circles. And so, in that sense, it's been a pleasure to be the person who brings that message forward because I think it is a very necessary one. But it seems to me that the conversation is always first about reliability and fuel security, adequacy of service and the like, but very rarely about what it costs to provide all of that service. And so, that is what I'd like to hear about from you folks today, the costs that are affecting you, the ideas that perhaps you have about how we should be approaching the question of affordability in the regional realm. Now, some of you here today I recognize from stakeholder processes that we have in regulating energy in the state, and so I welcome you, of course. But I'd like to spend a little bit of time speaking to people who don't perhaps quite as frequently deal with the subject matter but who have taken time today to join us in this conversation. I want to first explain what it is we mean by the region and the grid. I think people mostly think they know what that means until you start thinking a little more deeply. I would analogize that to a machine, that's what it's been called in literature on this matter, the biggest machine that humankind has ever built. What fascinates me about the grid is it was not an intentionally built machine in the sense that nobody sat in a shop or a laboratory and drew up plans and said, "Here's how we're going to create a grid that provides electricity for the geographic area that is known as New England." Instead, over the course of well over 100 years, little bits and pieces came together through, say, municipalities, through somebody's hydro facility that is to say a small dam in a brook somewhere, through somebody's generator, that eventually grew from that sort of mushroomed into this web of interconnected points of generation, and we learned to share power with each other. And then, as time evolved, we learned how to draw power from far, far away and to bring it here, which brings me to an essential characteristic about the New England grid and specifically in Vermont. Generally speaking, we import our power. We don't necessarily generate it here within our borders, which makes for an interesting relationship for us with the Independent Assistant Operator of New England because we're constantly, on one hand, on the receiving end of decisions that are made under their auspices about how to get that power to us. And yet, at the same time, we are a people in Vermont who very much like to have a say about what kind of power we get and where it's sited and how much of it we get, and I think more newly from my perspective, how much we pay for it. In any case, that is the grid, the machine, if you will, that connects us now as a sort of web. And the discussion we're having here today is how much can we afford in order to make use of that machine in our small part, recognizing that we're connected to other states that have bigger demands and bigger needs and perhaps greater tolerance for the price point. The other thing I want to call out to folks who may not be as familiar with the subject matter is the concept of markets. It's important to understand that in recent years only, the Independent Assistant Operator of New England has engaged in what's called market design. And the idea there was a few years ago that instead of managing our wholesale power by taking the power that in turn has been generated by utilities that own power generation capability, decisions were made to deregulate that process and to separate the generation from the provisioning from the distribution in the region. Much of that was done nationwide as well. As a result of this, folks came to believe that setting prices for wholesale power by using a market would be a preferable way to achieve just and reasonable rates as opposed to simply tallying up the cost of what it takes to provide that power, the way it had been done traditionally and which is very much the way rates are still set here in Vermont. Something to keep in mind is that Vermont is alone in New England as a state that is not deregulated, meaning that in Vermont, we still interface with our utilities and we set the rates on the basis of a cost of service method. We don't have a market that we go to in which we simply take the best price point for the power that we distribute to you folks. So, the reason I call that out is because this market, if the grid is not visible to you and familiar to you as an everyday article, the market is even more removed from your reality. Most of us, when we think of financial markets, probably have an image that comes to mind on the evening news, of footage from the trading floor of Wall Street. That's our best understanding of how financial markets work, our best visual representation of it. It's even more abstract power because there is no trading floor the way you see in New York City. Rather, these are interfaces that are done over computers facelessly but never namelessly, and everyday folks don't relate to it. But fundamentally, the power market, the wholesale power market, is just like what you would see, say, in a village somewhere where you're buying cheese and milk and sausage. It's people trading prices, talking to each other, saying, "How much are you willing to pay for this? How much are you willing to offer your power at?" And then, through a process of netting, if you will, those prices are set. What's important for our conversation today is to realize that we don't directly, we, the people in this room, set those prices, which is why I think a premium has to be placed on speaking in channels that are available to us, to the people who do set those prices, to help them understand what the impact of the price setting is on us. In other words, they may set up markets, they may manage markets, they may govern markets, we're the ones who live with the impacts of those markets. And so, we're the only ones who really who can speak in a voice of clarity to tell the market managers, "Here's how your actions are affecting us." So, with that overview, I apologize if it was long, but I felt it was important to take the time to speak to people who don't deal with the subject matter every day. I will now turn the podium over to my colleagues, Mr. Nguyen and Mr. McNamara, who will do a table-setting presentation for today's discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tierney. My name is Brian Wehanon. I'm the Director of Finance and Economics at the Vermont Department of Public Service. The presentation outlined today is Commissioner Tierney had her opening remarks. Ed and myself will provide a brief presentation on the regional energy costs. Then, we're going to open it up for discussion, and then there'll be some closing remarks by Commissioner Tierney. Go ahead, Commissioner. So, what you have in front of you now is a graphic that we obtained by getting information from the U.S. Energy Information Agency on the retail price of electricity, the average price of electricity in 2016. It's for nationwide, so every bar represents one of the states in the United States. The blue bars are most of the states. Vermont is in green, and the New England states are in white. And as you can see, the New England states cluster at the right end of the chart, which means the average price of electricity in New England is generally only higher in Alaska and Hawaii. So, there are many factors that account for the variation of energy prices across the nation. That's including their proximity to natural resources, the climate, available infrastructure, and, of course, public policy decisions. New England ranks as one of the highest-cost regions, like I said, behind Alaska and Hawaii, and there are a multitude of factors for that. To the next slide. Now, we get into the discussion that Commissioner Tierney was having regarding the wholesale costs. So, there's wholesale markets for electricity and there's a retail market. And we're going over these terms just so that as we have our discussion, people can be more specific, particularly on the costs that can be controlled by state policy versus the costs that need to be controlled by going through the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. Wholesale costs are what utilities have to pay to buy energy from generators around the region and the access to the transmission to get that energy from the generators to your distribution system. Retail costs are generally incurred by the local utility to distribute the power around their service territory. That's the capital, the O&amp;M, tree trimming, billing, state requirements, all of that is what we're defining for the purposes of this discussion as the retail costs. So, Commissioner was describing the New England power system, and I'm going to get in a little bit more detail here. The New England power system, the New England Electric, the New England System Operator, the ISO New England, is subject to FERC jurisdiction, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, with respect to the rates and transmission planning reliability requirements. So, they are, they operate, they dispatch the system, they administer the markets for electricity that the Commissioner was describing, and then they do the planning for the system going forward and what expansion requirements, capital planning needs are needed to maintain reliable service. So, there are two primary markets that they administer. One is the energy market. That's the attempt to dispatch the lowest-cost energy in every hour available to the market. And then, there is a forward capacity market. So, as you know, electricity demand is variable. Some days are very calm, there's not a big peak, but on the hottest day in the summer or the coldest day in the winter, electricity usage may surge. So, you have to have enough generators available to serve the load at its peak time. And so, that is a capacity market. You're paying generators to be around and available when needed. So, for the next slides, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Ed McNamara.
Thanks. So, just want to finish up on, sorry, Ed McNamara, I'm Director of Planning for Department of Public Service. I also, with Commissioner Tierney, represent Vermont through the New England States Committee on Electricity. Often means being in a room with 60 other people in a windowless hotel conference room talking about thousand-page market rule designs. If you're like me, it's actually fascinating, but that's why there's only 60 of us in the entire region that do this. Just to finish up on the forward capacity market, one important component is that Brian mentioned generators. You also have demand response and energy efficiency also plays into the forward capacity market. This is a pretty significant resource that's come up over the last, especially 10 years or so in the forward capacity market. And just to finish off this slide, ISO New England is also responsible for transmission planning. So, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission sets planning, sets transmission planning requirements. ISO New England is responsible for doing the actual planning to ensure that we meet these reliability requirements. This is just to give you an overview of the different buckets of costs and the relative contribution. So, the largest for all these years, from 2008 to 2017, is the blue, which is the energy cost. That's from the energy market. And you can see that varies over time. As we'll talk about, this is largely dependent on weather. If it's a very mild year, the air conditioners, especially in southern New England, are not running. You don't have a lot of, there's still actually some resistance heat back. You still have some people in Vermont who still have resistance heat, not that much. So, depending on the weather, the weather is the largest single determinant for the energy price each year. The next block is the forward capacity market. That has increased in price most years. And you can see, the most recent year is 2017, and the capacity markets is not an annual. It starts June 1st to May 31st. So, the most recent 2018 cost would actually be a little bit over $3 billion. That's a cost that's increasing over time. However, because it's a market that's designed to procure resources three years in advance, we actually know that the trend is starting to decline over the next couple of years after this peak that we're going through right now. We haven't talked about ancillary markets. That's essentially what the grid operator needs to keep things in balance. Frequency regulation, you just change generators, they output every four seconds or so to keep up with the micro-changes in load that you have every second. Transmission charges. ISO New England essentially collects all the money from customers to then hand it over to the transmission owners in New England. Felco is our transmission owner in Vermont, but you also have National Grid and Eversource are the two largest in New England. You can see that these costs have been increasing pretty significantly. That's largely because of a change in NERC reliability standards, and that required that we essentially have more transmission in place in case there's a generator trips offline or if a transmission line trips offline. These reliability requirements have gotten more stringent, but at this point, according to ISO New England, we're pretty much at the full rollout of transmission that we need for the current reliability requirements. So, we'll see a slight increase in price over the next few years as new projects come online. These projects can take three to five years to build, so we're still seeing a little bit of that glut coming through, and then it should be fairly level after that. And then, the last cost, the orange at the top, is the cost that consumers pay to actually have ISO New England run the markets and to also plan for transmission as well. And that has, that's not showing up. It has increased, especially in the last couple of years. ISO New England's response has been that the main cost drivers are cybersecurity concerns, increasing requirements around cybersecurity as we are more interconnected with the Internet and with more automation. You obviously have more concerns about cybersecurity. So, that's been ISO's response to increasing costs for their RTO. Next slide, please. So, this shows the total average prices for, essentially what Energy Information Administration does, is it aggregates all the electricity costs for all the ratepayers in that state and then divides it by the number of ratepayers. So, what this is showing, the green line is Vermont. We're, for the last several years, we've been below, everybody else except for Maine is at the bottom. You can see the other states on the top. And one interesting thing to keep in mind is you can see this pretty significant increase in 2013, 2014 for most of the other states, and we'll get to that in a little bit. Just wanted to point that out for now. Next slide, please. So, general trends, energy prices, especially the last couple of years, have been a lot lower than prior years. Starting in about 2009, 2010, you started getting lower energy prices largely as a result of shale gas, and that's the access to much cheaper natural gas Pennsylvania, New York Used to be that energy prices peaked in the summertime. With the energy efficiency that we're doing in the region and also with a lot of the solar PV that we're putting out as well, a lot of this sort of net metering, small-scale solar, what we're, excuse me, what we're seeing is energy prices are now peaking in the wintertime. We're going to talk about that a little bit more, but that's a pretty significant change that's just happened in the last two or three years. I already talked about capacity prices. We just entered, starting January, sorry, starting June 1st, the highest period of capacity prices we've had since capacity markets started. And we know that these are going to be dropping off to about less than half of what they are three years from now. One of the important things for capacity, Brian gave a brief overview, is essentially how many resources you need, how much energy efficiency, how many generators. Capacity prices are extremely difficult to predict going forward because you could have a 2,000-megawatt generation unit drop offline. Supply and demand just means you've lost a large amount of supply. Demand is still there, so prices skyrocket. That's essentially how we ended up with $9.55. One or two really large retirements skewed the entire market. So, we don't, and since we can't predict when resources are actually going to retire, it's very difficult to predict what the capacity prices are going to be. And then, finally, the transmission costs, about $110 per kilowatt per year. It was, I think about, I think it was like mid-'70s even 10 years ago. So, it's increased pretty significantly. It will increase a little bit more over the next few years and then level off. Next slide, please. This is simply a different representation of the earlier bar chart. Has a little bit more detail if people want to go back and look at the notes on there. Next slide, please. So, I mentioned before, energy prices and what happens in the winter. ISO New England, in the last year especially, has been raising concerns about what they're termed in fuel security. So, in the wintertime, excuse me, used to be that the majority of the generation units in New England, even 15, 20 years ago, were actually oil-fired units. Oil is very expensive. With the glut of cheap natural gas now coming out of Pennsylvania, New York, we've turned to, the region has started building a lot more natural gas-fired generation. However, there has not been a corresponding increase in the amount of pipeline to bring natural gas into the region. So, what happens is during the wintertime, the natural gas goes to heating companies. They have priority rights over that gas. Gas generators can use any gas that's left over that's available, but for the most part, there's constraints in the availability of gas in the wintertime in New England, and that's causing significant price spikes. So, this chart simply shows what's actually happening, and you can see the darker blue line is the price of electricity and the lighter blue line is the price of natural gas. So, you can see that they move in tandem. Disruptions from hurricanes have caused that price spike, I think that was 2006 or so. And then, you can see the energy prices actually dropping off a fair amount except for these really significant peaks, especially the winter of 2013, 2014. Next slide, please. So, I already mentioned the priority rights that gas, the heating customers have. What we've also seen is about 1,200 megawatts of nuclear units, and almost all the coal units at this point have retired or will retire in the next year or two, and some oil-fired units are retiring as well. So, that means the region is getting more reliant on natural gas, and we have not built out the gas pipeline to supply during the wintertime. So, in this regional discussion, we've been talking about how do we deal with this issue? So, it's been identified so far by different stakeholders. Offshore wind, Massachusetts has been doing a significant build-out or at least has contracts to do a significant build-out, 1,600 megawatts. Rhode Island built the first offshore wind facility in the entire U.S. It was just commissioned last year. Connecticut and Rhode Island are also looking to do offshore facilities. The coincidence with offshore wind production and cold weather is about 40%, 44%. So, that's actually a pretty good resource for the wintertime. Demand response and energy efficiency, in other words, don't use the electricity in the first place. Weatherization should fit into this category as well, especially where you have Connecticut, Massachusetts, Rhode Island, where that gas is either going to the generator or for heating. To the extent that people are buttoning up their homes and using less gas, there's more gas availability generally. Can also do smaller-scale storage. And dual-fuel capability simply means a gas-fired generating unit would put in an oil tank and change its configuration a little bit so when it can't get gas, it can burn oil as well. That last one, one of the things that we always have to keep in mind is the environmental impact of generation. Affordability is one issue, fuel security, ensuring that electricity is available, then, of course, the environmental impacts. So, to the extent that we can do things without relying on oil can be a good thing, however, you need to balance that with affordability as well. Next slide, please. And then, this is just a very, very high-level summary of some thoughts that we've sort of kicked around of how do you increase affordability at the regional level? So, in terms of clean energy, we've talked about, I talked a little bit about wintertime and the peaks. So, just as, for example, in Vermont, most of our clean energy that's been taking place over the last several years, not accounting for energy efficiency, just generation, has been solar. Solar is not particularly useful during winter months. So, you need to take into account not just the total amount of clean energy being produced but the timing as well. And then, also, it's very important that all stakeholders, the states have been pushing this with Commissioner Tierney's leadership, I think all stakeholders in the ISO New England process also need to talk about affordability. Every time ISO New England comes up with a new market, they're discussing a wintertime fuel security market right now, changes to forward capacity market, changes to any of these markets, potential changes to federal reliability, transmission reliability standards. Every time we have that discussion, affordability needs to be a component of that discussion along with sustainability and reliability as well. Those are the three main components that's actually written into Vermont law as our three major goals for our electricity policy. And with that, I will turn it back to Commissioner Tierney.
So, thank you, Ed and Brian. That was a very concise and, I think, comprehensive overview of the landscape that we are traveling in as we have this conversation. And it is with some pride that I emphasize that the least-cost aspect of energy policy is etched in Vermont law. It is something that my colleagues and I have been contending with in a variety of venues for the last 20 years and in the time that we've worked in this field. And it's something that I lead with in the region where, as I said before, it isn't necessarily the first topic that comes to mind in other states, but I think it is a legitimate consideration. But I think it is a legitimate consideration in our discussions about how we manage our markets. It's interesting to me, for instance, that in grappling recently with fuel security, the ISO has come to the conclusion that there's a need to seek what's called a waiver of the market in order to facilitate a potential solution to keep a plant online in Massachusetts that is needed for reliability purposes, meaning if it goes offline, if it retires as the owners suggest, then that will leave a big gap in our supply as Ed was describing earlier. And the ISO comes to the conclusion that they need a waiver from the market in order to get cost-of-service-based rate-making for this plant because that's how much we need it. And that may well be a logical conclusion, that's under discussion right now. But the price tag associated with that, Ed, if I'm not mistaken, is something in the neighborhood of $500 million, is it not? The waiver?
I think it's actually a little bit more.
He says a little bit more, but let's stick with $500 million because it's slightly more relatable. However you slice that, the portion of that, however small it may be for Vermont, is nonetheless significant to us. And so it's in that context that I've been furiously pounding the table and saying, yes, but what about affordability? I understand you need this solution, but is it truly affordable for folks in the region? My colleagues and I have done a lot of talking for the last half hour. And you folks who showed up here today and you folks who are online, you didn't come here just to hear us talk. We came here to hear from you. And so at this time, I'm going to look out among the faces in the auditorium and say, who would like to speak first in our conversation, whether it is to make a comment or to raise a point for discussion? And after I've scanned the room and I see everybody looking at their toes, I'm not above calling on you, but not you. I'm next going to look to my technician, our very capable telecom specialist, Corey Chase. Thank you. And to Ed, to see whether we have online chat queries yet.
Not yet.
Not yet, very good. Having now done the polite thing and scanned the room and checked in with our neighbors who are joining us online, I will now go back to the eager volunteer I had in the back who I think was offering up his boss, is that not right, Tom?
Offering up myself.
You're offering up yourself, very good. And so no pressure. The protocol for today, for those who are here in my pillar, is will you kindly come to the podium to make your remark or to pose your question? Because it's good for you to stand up, nobody should sit for prolonged periods of time. And secondly, because as I said earlier, there's a camera trained on us here at the podium so that folks online can follow the discussion. And so that's where folks will see you. So Tom, why don't you show us how it's done and come up here with your prepared statement and let us hear from Global Foundries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Pleasure.
My way of introduction, my name is Tom Jagalski. I'm Director of Site Operations at Global Foundries in Essex Junction. Good afternoon and thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to the challenges of the high cost of electricity to our business here in Vermont, especially in the light of the fact that energy rates are 84% less expensive than our facilities in New York. To give you an idea of how impactful that difference is, Global Foundries in Vermont pays nearly $36 million a year in electric bills. If our facility were located in New York, that number would be over $14 million a year or less, or Global Foundries would only pay $21 million a year for the same amount of electricity. I hope to convey to you the enormous cost pressures that are semiconductor business bases here in Vermont, what we have done to control those costs and where we desperately need assistance to address Vermont energy policy to bend the cost curve on electricity. As many of you know, our facility was founded by IBM in 1957, acquired by Global Foundries in July of 2015. And it is currently a facility that encompasses 725 acres in Williston and Essex Junction, 30 buildings, over 3.5 million square feet, with a half million square feet of high-tech clean room for semiconductor manufacturing. We are a transmission-class customer, the only transmission-class customer in the state of Vermont, and we consume nearly as much electricity as the city of Burlington. Our peak load is nearly 60 megawatts. There are several things that have changed since Global Foundry acquired the IBM facility. We are no longer a captive IP facility, rather, we are now a manufacturing services facility that is in the global and exceedingly cost-competitive business. Our customers and our competition is worldwide. The customer owns the intellectual property. We build to the customer's specifications and bid on the cost of providing the customer's product. The competition is keen and focused on the cost of production. The industry itself expects and receives cost decreases on product produced that averages between 4% and 10% annually. In addition, a number of our Vermont products are qualified to be produced in Global Foundry's other fabs located throughout the world. If the cost to produce isn't competitive here, the business can elect to move production to the location that does have the lowest cost to produce. Roughly 50% of our portfolio is qualified to be produced in our other fabs. Global Foundries Vermont has responded to these market conditions aggressively. Since 2015, we have reduced production costs by nearly 35% and it is still not enough. In 2015, our nonlabor and non-electrical cost to produce product has been reduced from 60% to below 40% of our total cost to produce. As a result, labor costs as a percentage of costs have increased from 33% to 45% and our electrical costs from 8% to nearly 15% of our cost to product. That electrical costs have increased as a percentage of our production costs comes in light of the fact that we have reduced our usage by 8% through conservation while our electric rates have increased by 12%. We continue to push productivity and look for opportunities to conserve our usage in light of increasing energy costs. This is particularly frustrating to our Vermont facility as the cost of electricity in New York and Quebec, our neighbors within 60 miles of us, are roughly 6 cents per kilowatt hour and 3 cents per kilowatt hour respectively. Access to those low-cost sources remain out of our reach. Again, that difference to the Vermont facility is about $14 million annually in costs when compared to New York. In short, we need to understand what policy factors are driving those differences, whether it be energy policy, transmission costs, capacities, ISO New England renewables, and work to make our region's electrical costs competitive to the states outside of New England. Our survival as a viable thriving business in Vermont depends upon it. Again, Commissioner Brian, thank you very much for the opportunity to present our view of the energy market in Vermont. We are committed to working with the administration, the regulators, the legislators, and the utilities to effect change that would allow access to low-cost electricity.
So Tom, if you would just stay there for a moment. I appreciate the overview that you just gave of the concerns that Global Foundry has. I have two questions for you, or better said, one question after I try to answer your ending question, which was what's driving these costs? And I think it's fair to say all of the above. And then there probably is one element missing from the list unless I misunderstood it, which is the extent to which a state is also in the position to offer other tools such as tax incentives and the like in order to create a more fertile or a comparatively preferable environment such as in New York State. With that said, here's my question to you. You saw a slide a moment ago from Ed where you saw these layers stacked for each year of what the costs are at the regional level that drive electricity in the wholesale markets. A lot of the choices that ISO is making in managing the markets and the planning function account for those layers in the cost bars. There are also policies which I will loosely call renewable policies, efficiency policies, and the like here at the state level that have an impact on the costs that our distribution utilities incur in providing electricity and service here in state. Given your choice, if I can put you on the spot, if you were king for a day, where would you make the adjustments in policy in order to bend the cost curve down, as you said, here in Vermont?
And I believe as you so adequately described, it is a complicated process.
It most certainly is. But complication becomes the refuge of the fool and the thief in this discussion. So we're not going to take that out today. It's a given, things are complicated. I wouldn't want to put people off by impressing upon them how complicated this discussion is. So let's just take that as a given. Take it away, Tom.
Okay.
You'll be absolved for anything you say, I'm sure.
So basically, there are a lot of moving parts to this whole thing, whether it be renewables, whether it be transmission costs, whether it be ISO New England.
Talk to the camera.
Sorry.
Not at all. It's hard to go to Hollywood in one day, so.
So there are a lot of different moving parts associated with the costs associated with electricity. We don't quite understand how it can be so inexpensive in one location as compared to a location in ourselves. And again, we're talking about if we had the possibility of taking an extension cord and throwing it across the lake, we could roughly cut our costs by half or more if we could get it up to.
Is there anyone from CLF here today who would like to speak to throwing an extension cord across Lake Champlain? You're a lucky man, there's nobody here today. But go ahead.
It's hyperbole, by the way.
Love it, too. It's very imagistic.
Worked in Quebec, we could, you know, obtain much cheaper costs. We don't know what the barriers, we don't quite understand what the barriers are to that type of approach. But we're willing to work with the regulators, utilities, and whomever to better understand it and maybe effect change to where we can actually access that lower-cost power. Because as we have seen over the, as the one chart showed, we have seen the energy costs actually, the market costs actually go down over the past few years. We're not in that particular situation at this point in time. We're living at the outlook of prices going up. And in fact, we just received an increase of about 5% this year. So we stand ready to, I mean, you know, and again, you just take a look at the renewable portfolio standards and some of the renewables that also drive costs in terms of whether or not we pay too dearly for those particular sources of energy and whether or not that's, whether it should be more market-based or not market-based. So there are a number of things that we can push on, but again, it all depends upon what the appetite is of Vermont to address some of those high-cost sources of power.
So from that comment, Tom, what I'm taking away is that you see the potential redress for Global Foundry's situation to be located primarily in the state of Vermont with the regulatory framework here. And my question to you would be, at the ISO New England level in the regional realm, those are the folks who are in the first order responsible for ensuring a steady supply of energy in our region. And secondly, that it's reliable. And what I hear in my discussions very frequently from the state of Massachusetts is, we can't afford a nanosecond of outage. That is how stringent our liability needs to be. And when that remark is made in those conversations, it's generally intended as a full stop to anything that I'm saying about affordability. So my question to you would be, do you agree with that characterization from Massachusetts that we have to have near-perfect absolute reliability 24/7? Or is there a modicum of less reliability that we could tolerate in our region if it meant having a more affordable source of power?
Unfortunately, Commissioner, we don't have the business that will allow for less-than-perfect reliability. I mean, our semiconductor machinery is expensive, it's sensitive, and we measure outages and are impacted by percentages of cycles, percentages of seconds. And we've seen that from time to time and we've worked with our utility and they've been very good about improving the overall product power quality to our facility to the point where issues that were a number of years ago were significant are less so at this point in time. So, but again, we can't go backwards on that particular issue of reliability because our equipment just won't tolerate. And the expense of the materials that we have in our factory will not tolerate those drops in power.
So you'll be pleased to know that in those conversations with Massachusetts, I regularly cite your case as the point of commonality in order to put a stop to what Massachusetts is saying in the conversation. And I tell them about our friends at Global Foundries who have absolutely no tolerance for reliability either because they're in the semiconductor business and they need to have near-perfect power. So I hope it gives you comfort that your regulator is cognizant of these facts of life and is an ambassador for them in the region. But that said, after Massachusetts and I have shared our verbal blows with each other in these regional conversations, we're then left right where we started, which is this sort of uncomfortable throwing up your hands and saying, what are we going to do about this then? Our appetite is endless for absolutely reliable power, but at the same time, we find the increasing costs, as you so eloquently described it, increasingly intolerable. And that's what brings us to our conversation here today. So Tom, I thank you for your remarks and I'm going to turn briefly to my colleagues here to see if they have something to add or if we have anything from the chat line that would be directed with Mr. Jagalski is saying.
Do not have anything.
Okay. And do you guys have any follow-up questions?
So, Tom, you keep comparing ISO New England to neighboring states and neighboring regions, reliability regions. Have you worked trying to find solutions that would allow you to access the power from those other regions?
Well, I mean, other than the discussions that we've had extensively with the Department of Public Service in terms of trying to understand what are, I mean, as we all know, we're a regulated market here. And we've been talking about freeing up market access as a possible solution to solving some of the cost problems that we experience. But again, clearly, your department has been helpful and attentive to our concerns. We haven't come up quite yet with the magic bullet that will solve some of our problems. But again, you've been an excellent resource in terms of trying to at least understand the problems and in terms of what some of our options are for accessing market power at a lower cost.
So let me go out to our friends here in the audience. Has anybody had a thought or a comment that they'd like to share with us about what's been heard or said so far? I see people looking at computer screens. I see a hand go up. Are there other hands besides the sacrificial lamb here? All right, I believe that is Olivia from REV, is that right? I can't see her well because I've got lights in my eyes, forgive me. Olivia Campbell. Could you come on up and let us hear from you?
Sure. Well, I also wasn't sure if we were like having a conversation back and forth dialogue about what was said or wanting to start like a new conversation.
We can do that, too. If you wanted to start a new conversation, that's fine. But did you have something to add to this one?
Well, I don't know if it warrants coming up, but.
It does because the folks online can't hear you otherwise. I apologize for the cumbersome nature of this, but as I said, it's better than sitting for three hours straight.
I was hoping there was going to be a film shot given the.
Given the auditorium setting, is that right? I think we can let you off the hot seat, except I think that Ms. Campbell's about to address a question to you, so you may want to stay there.
Yeah. Well, so I was going to. Olivia Campbell Anderson, Renewable Energy Vermont.
Camera's right there, so come on up. There you go. We're good, thank you.
So I didn't do my hair today.
But it looks fabulous, darling, you're good to go.
At least you have some.
So you seem to actually allude to, in both of your comments, around electricity choice. And so I was wondering, I know that other states and businesses in other states have that option, we don't have that option here in Vermont. I mean, could you speak more to your interest or is that a viable solution that we could be looking at as a state, you know, policy when you talk about your comments around access to, you know, other choices?
Well, again, I mean, as far as we're concerned, I mean, we're interested in any and all possibilities to try and bend the curve, I mean, the cost curve. So I mean, I will not dismiss anything out of hand in terms of as a possibility or as an option to address the problem that we have. Because again, it's what we're talking about at this point in time, notwithstanding the fact that we need the reliable and power and good power, and excellent power quality, it's a cost thing because other locations, our competitors also have. It's a cost thing because other locations, our competitors also have reliable power, but at a much cheaper cost. And the problem is the cost of electricity is just simply becoming a burden to our overall cost of production.
Sure. Well, and I offer that not necessarily as a rev position, but just as part of dialogue and the conversation here on this topic.
I think that's very helpful, and I think what I'll interject, because I am sensing that you might have a follow-up point to make.
No, not really.
Not at all. Don't be shy now. No, no, no.
I have a different, totally different...
Well, I actually have a question for you, if you'll stay there, Ms. Anderson, which is, and forgive me for mangling the names, but it's, it's an affliction I seem to develop lately in this position. People call me "hey you" and a whole bunch of other things that aren't very nice. So I've developed something of a block about names. But in any case, let's just posit for the sake of discussion that, as I have learned in my years of doing this work, the legislature in Vermont has a pen and is able and willing to craft an open path, if one doesn't exist already, to the kind of choice that Global Foundries is alluding to. What do you suppose your thoughts about that would be if such legislation were enacted?
I think it's something that the state should look into and, and research the benefits and if there are downsides. I don't know the answers to that, but I think it's, I raise it as a question because I thought I was hearing it in some of your remarks. And it could be also a way to more affordably address the issue of electricity prices while also affordably addressing our commitment to achieving total renewable energy and to reducing our climate pollution. And so I'm wondering, you know, I raise it as it's a potential, not as recommending it, but something that we should research and look into, but as a option to help businesses reduce their costs and also help the state and businesses themselves meet their renewable energy and climate commitments. Because we do know that many businesses are, have, I think, share your concerns, Global Foundries' concerns. And we also hear from many businesses that would like to increase, would like to meet, you know, their business commitments that they have made to renewable energy and climate. And that can be challenging without having some direct access to doing their own purchasing for renewable energy or other energy choice solutions. So I think it's worth discussion.
Okay. So I continue to notice, and Tom, at this point, I think you're off the hot seat for Ms. Anderson. Campbell Anderson is not yet.
Did anyone else want to raise their hand?
We'll talk to, we'll talk to others in just a moment, but pause for this station break. Okay, I'm being told that Mr. McNamara, I can remember his name. I would like to follow up on the choice question that Ms. Campbell Anderson has raised. So Ed, go right ahead.
No, Mrs. Corey, can you put up the slide? Which slide is that? Eight, please. Thanks. And I mentioned this earlier, and this is not to make any definitive statement or anything else, but the idea of, once you open up and you have retail choice...
Can I stand? I'm gonna stand over here so I can see the slide, because I actually couldn't see it.
That's quite all right. We'll call you back in a moment.
So this is, this is not to make any definitive statements. This is just to follow up on the idea that we're, everything's a trade-off, everything's a balance. And the reason I want to point to this slide is if you look at 2012 through 2015, you can see pretty sharp increases in prices for most of the states, those lines above Vermont. Those are the states that, all the states except for Vermont are restructured, have choice. In the winter of 2013, 2014, the polar vortex, six months later, there was one Massachusetts utility that had a, I think it was almost a 60% rate increase. And it was because it was exposed to the market. That's very different than what our utilities do, which is they hedge out over, sometimes it's actually a 20-year period. So long-term contracts have the stability and that you reduce the flexibility to float with as gas prices come down. Vermont did not come down in the same, as quickly as some of the other states in terms of the reflection through the retail rates. At the same time, when they spike again, we don't see that spike. So this is not, this is simply noting the trade-off of, once you move towards more choice and customers take more risks, they're, they're exposed to greater volatility. And that's, it's not necessarily a bad thing. It's simply to policymakers, to the legislature, wants to say to folks, "You're the adults. Do you want to be exposed to risk or do you not want to be exposed to more of a hedging, flat strategy?" So...
Yeah, I think that's important, but I, it's also, two things, it's important to note, short-term costs versus long-term costs, as you did. And I think the state and utilities have been very successful with the long-term contracts is, is creating some predictability and, but, you know, for example, if a private business were to enter into, had the ability to enter into a power purchase agreement or do a sleeve tariff, I may be using the wrong terms, they would also have that similar predictability. And so I think we're talking about multiple different issues here. But that's a really good point, and I think also the point of short-term fluctuations in prices versus long-term predictability and, you know, investments in renewable energy over the long term. While we do have an upfront capital cost, have saved the state and will continue to save the state and the region in the long term. So, thanks. Are you...
For now, I'm done with you. If you, if you run away, you'll escape further questioning. So I thought that was a very...
No, no, no.
Not at all. Thought that was a very interesting exchange. And one of the things I noted almost immediately was how quickly we start talking about the issues in terms of what happens within Vermont. And we're all very well-schooled in those issues. And I think part of the reason why we find it more difficult to relate to the regional conversation is because we sort of accept as a premise that we have to take care of ourselves here because we are this little, continues-to-be vertically-integrated state in the energy world, surrounded by states that have long since made the jump to deregulation and with that have embraced the risks that come with it. A question for you, Tom, all the way in the back now that you fled the podium, is this. If it meant embracing the kind of risk that that Massachusetts entity experienced where the result was a 60% increase because of exposure to the market, because we've gone that route of deregulation, as Ms. Campbell Anderson has suggested perhaps we ought to, you may not have known that that was the word I would use...
No, that's really suggesting that...
But suggest for the sake of discussion. Correct, yes. It should be a given again that I'm not going to write any of these things down and hold people accountable personally for these things. It's, it's so important to have a fulsome dialogue without being inhibited by the concern that you're somehow crossing a bridge or marrying yourself to a position you're going to regret later. But still, Tom, I would ask you, is that, is that the kind of thing that an enterprise such as Global Foundries would willingly embrace?
Did I fill down?
Oh, yes. But you have to come up here and do it. Okay.
Tom only let me come because I promised not to talk.
This is my experience with Global Foundries. You folks break your word when you have to. Go ahead.
I don't want to make this a Global Foundries meeting, but...
Not at all, but so far.
I'm sitting on my tongue back there. So yes, in New York State, we are, as you know, deregulated. So little background, Pat Flaherty, Site Operations Manager. Half of my job is the same as the other half of my job. So half is Fishkill, New York, and the other half is Burlington, Vermont. And I do everything with utilities and facilities and all of that stuff. So every month, I see the regulated bill and I see the deregulated bill. And yes, we hedge and lock personally in New York. As a corporation, we're extremely comfortable with that and actually have a worldwide policy that covers that. So any, actually, there's a corporate policy that determines how much we lock, when we lock, and how far in advance. So on a typical year, we'll hedge roughly 75%, and then we'll ride market on 25%. So as a corporation, we've been told, be careful what you ask for with retail choice. But everywhere else, well, I can't say Europe, but everywhere else in the world, we hedge and lock. So we're extremely comfortable with that.
Fair enough.
I'll answer that question.
Well, Patrick, no, I appreciate that, and thanks for stepping in, in that manner. I, I have no question in my mind that a multinational, sophisticated, global-reach company has that comfort level, so that makes perfect sense to me. I wonder, though, what our fellow Vermonters would say to that, who are perhaps not quite as well-resourced. And perhaps part of what we're talking about today is entertaining partial deregulation of some kind. I don't foreclose the possibility, having not studied the issue from a legal perspective. I don't know if you're aware of this, but in my present capacity, I'm not practicing law, so they've taken my law books away from me. I haven't studied the issue to be able to say whether it's in fact foreclosed by Vermont law like now. I have heard from some folks in the executive circles in Vermont that in fact, we essentially, virtually are deregulated already in some respects when you look at how we do net metering, for instance. So it's an interesting point to, to examine in, in greater detail. It is important to stay mindful of the fact that we are not a model with electricity consumers in Vermont. We have different players who are capable of tolerating different things. I'm wondering, though, how we bring the discussion back to talking about affordability as a regional issue. And so I'm going to go out to the audience one more time now. Here physically, I see I have a hand over there in the dark. And perhaps are we about to start a new topic or is it something grafted onto what's gone before?
Primarily a new topic, but on affordability.
Not at all. Is there anybody who'd like to speak to what's gone before, before we transition to a new topic? Mr. Smith, do I see your hand up?
Yes, I have Doug Smith and Green Mountain Power.
But you do have, you do have to come up, Mr. Smith. I made everybody else do it, I gotta make you do it, too. And then, sir, can you give me your name back there?
Thomas Hughes.
Thank you, Thomas. Mr. Hughes. Go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon. Doug Smith, Green Mountain Power. So my role and responsibilities at GMP are in the power supply procurement area. So I see a lot of the same market forces that some of the speakers have talked about, as well as our Public Service Department colleagues. My teammates and I often see them as buyers. Basically, we are, our team at GMP is buying power, trying to buy that at the, at the best times and at the lowest prices we can to meet the power demands that Mr. McNamara laid out the market structure for. We're trying to buy power for our customers in the least, least-cost way we can. So that's, that's where I'm coming from for this conversation. I was hoping to touch on a couple of the topics. I think they're related, but it, it may seem a little piecemeal.
Not at all.
Not trying to address all of them comprehensively. Couple things. First, the introduction that the Public Service Department team gave about the markets and about the way Vermont procures power, I don't have too much to add to that. It's accurate, and I think it's a helpful way of setting the stage. GMP and most of Vermont are purchased power entities. So we, GMP owns some of the power plants that generate the electricity, but the clear majority is purchased from various types of vendors and power plants and technologies. And what I wanted to add is simply to Mr. McNamara's point, he was showing market prices and, and trends. The thing I wanted to note is those trends in wholesale power prices, to some significant degree, they affect the price at which a Green Mountain Power or other Vermont utilities or will get to a retail customer. But basically, buyers in the power market, those trends there are driven largely by the factors he mentioned, supply and demand, natural gas prices. But they affect the price at which we can buy power from a wide range of sources, a hydroelectric plant, a nuclear plant, those same trends that the department put on one of its earlier slides. They affect the, and directly affect the price at which GMP or other Vermont utilities can buy power on behalf of our customers. So they are important in that way. Finally, by way of context, the several speakers are also correct that Vermont policy has emphasized trying to procure power at low cost, but also with an eye towards stability and predictability over time. There is a trade-off, as several of you were alluding to, between maximum flexibility to procure power from the wholesale market, like is available to customers in a retail-access state, versus the relatively smooth ride that you see in the more stable line in Vermont. As Ed says, Mr. McNamara, there's not a right or wrong, but it is a real trade-off. Getting a little closer to the, to the posted topic here, I wanted to hit, if we're talking about regional affordability and, and factors, there are several that I think are worth mentioning. Potential Vermont actions, some of which have been taken or could be taken, include, you know, one step is to focus, as the speaker said, on affordability in the market design choices that the grid operator, ISO New England, and others make. This, this department, I've seen them do that at times in collaboration with the Vermont utilities. But it, it sounds a little academic, but it matters. A couple of examples of that, in the past handful of years, there have been proposals. At one point, basically watching those polar vortex years, one proposal was to build a natural gas pipeline into the region and essentially share those costs amongst all electric utilities in states in the region, including Vermont, which had done a lot of long-term contracting, stable-price sources, and we would not have benefited nearly as much compared to the other states. That's, that's one example. Another one is, in procuring renewable power, Massachusetts has been pursuing several large-scale import projects. One of those would have delivered, I believe it's called the Vermont Green Line, would have delivered roughly 400 megawatts into the Vermont grid. And we discovered that that would have created quite a congestion on Vermont's transmission system and to the detriment of our retail customers at times. So again, I raise these as examples where it sounds a little academic, but there are real actions that can be taken in the regional realm. In that case, Green Mountain Power, other utilities, and the Public Service Department basically collaborated to point out this perhaps unanticipated effect of a regional project and made sure that our Public Utility Commission understood that. And that that would be a consideration in the permitting and evaluation of whether that project is economically beneficial for Vermont. I wanted to hit, in the latter part of this discussion, there was a couple of things about wholesale power markets and then retail access. Couple things about that. I hope retail access and choice can be a tool. I worked for about 15 years in consulting, and one of our primary engagements was helping retail customers, generally large users, shop for power. So a couple of things about that. One, there really is a trade-off between volatility and price stability. It's not a cure-all, either. Recently, as Global Foundries has been, you know, raising concerns about the price of power in Vermont, one of the benchmarks that I and my teammates looked at is, well, what if the power supply for that customer reflecting its magnitude of consumption, shape over the year? What if that was purchased from scratch at the wholesale power market? No prior commitments by Green Mountain Power or anyone else? What if it was purchased from scratch at the wholesale market? Despite the fact that we're at a relative moderate point on those charts Mr. McNamara shared earlier, prices are fairly moderate, that answer came out, energy... shared earlier, prices are fairly moderate, that answer came out, energy, capacity, transmission, that was between seven and eight cents a kilowatt. Okay? So I want to, I think it's important to recognize that the primary thing you get from retail access, and what our clients did in the consulting realm, is choice about the flexi, about the duration and nature of the commitments they make. But market doesn't necessarily mean a lot cheaper. And the other implication of that comparison is, if we go back to Tom's first sort of introductory comments about the cost of power, think about the implication of what I was just comparing. If the power for Global Foundries was bought from scratch in the wholesale market, we nor, I don't believe Global Foundry nor another retail supplier, we couldn't get to that six cents per kilowatt hour benchmark that he mentioned in New York. There are other factors at play. To first order, capacity and energy market prices are similar in many parts of New England and New York. But there's another difference, which is the state policies as to the retail pricing of electricity. And I think, as the commissioner noted, choices about the level of incentives to make sure that manufacturing operations are present and viable, that's another meaningful factor in the price of power when you're comparing across states. The final thing I wanted to note is, as some of the speakers, you know, the commissioner noted, that the comments sort of gravitated back to Vermont in some ways. I just wanted to note that some of the choices about affordability of electricity do, in fact, depend on Vermont-specific choices. One is renewable power. And I just wanted to note that, in general, in my view, and I think GMP's view, Vermont has a pretty balanced framework right now. The so-called Renewable Energy Standard, or RES, has a number of positive features. It's gradual over time. It allows a mix of technologies. It encourages cost-effective electrification, which is a way to spread out those costs of the grid they were talking about earlier over more customers. So there's a number of positive things in that RES framework or Renewable Energy Standard. And as we move forward, one of the things that Vermont can do is to monitor and tune, if necessary, the programs in our state to promote renewables with an eye toward affordability. And that is, that is a lever that is, to some degree, in Vermont's hand. Most recently, Green Mountain Power, I've submitted comments in the Pu, Public Utility Commission's review noting that, in contrast to the early years of the net metering program, growth in net metering is putting some pressure on our retail rates. In a low market, low power market price environment, that's an example where, of what I said earlier, where we need to watch the cost of the program as well as the benefits that it's bringing. And if necessary, push the balance more toward affordability. That's what our comments recommended this spring, a reduction in several cents per kilowatt hour in the incentive rate, not to cut off net metering, but to try to strike more of a balance toward the affordability goal. Thank you.
Well, Doug, thank you. So let me go out to our audience and see, are there reactions or counterpoints from the audience to what Mr. Smith just said? They're all avoiding? No, not at all. In that case, before I go to Mr. Hughes, I have one question for you, Doug, which is, if I posed to you the same question that I posed to Tom earlier, given the choice between making affordability adjustments in the state policy realm and the regional realm, where do you think the emphasis at this point could be most productively placed? Now, in your comments here, you were just saying, there's a lot we can do here in Vermont. But I don't want to foreclose the possibility that you might have an opinion about what we could be doing at the regional level, if at all.
Fair question. I don't, I don't think it's an either/or, and your question didn't, you know, didn't put it that way. I don't think it's an either/or, but I think you did discern from my comments that, in my view, our own choices here in the state of what resources are developed, at what pace, how are they priced, can make a difference. And that's one where, if we have a thoughtful dialogue, it can make a difference in a pretty timely way as well. I think, Mr., in contrast, in the regional realm, we can make a difference too. And I've seen, at times, this department, the Public Service Department's comments shift the conversation in some of those conference rooms that Ed was joking about before when regional market rules are being discussed. But it is more challenging to predict the success of that. We are several percent, on the order of 4% weight in New England. And we can, we can affect that dialogue, but for some issues, we can speak and have a vote, and we won't carry the day. The other thing I'll say about the regional issues is, they may crop up. You alluded to afford capacity market design and an exception that the grid operator had requested. Some of those regional issues, you can't anticipate and plan for, I don't think, as well in advance. You have to be a little more responsive and respond as they come up. I think some of the ones in Vermont, we're more in control of the information of, how is compliance with the RES standard doing? How are we doing on our carbon and renewable goals, things like that, and tune them? Some of the regional ones come up a little bit more in reaction to current events. That's my take.
All right. Well, Doug, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll allow you to return to your seat now and to safety. What I would remark about what you just said is that I'm constantly reminded through these conversations that we are not an island, and yet so much of our energy policy is designed very much to be self-contained because we gravitate toward that ability to control what we do within our state boundaries. And yet there is so much going on around us regionally that affects us, that requires us to get out beyond our boundaries and to be present in those conversations in a meaningful way. You very correctly noted that we have a 4% weight in the region, as opposed to, say, Massachusetts' 50% weight, or Connecticut's 25% weight. That gives you some insight into why the folks from Massachusetts are inclined to stop me full stop when I speak of affordability. You can also appreciate, though, that knowledgeable as I am about that 4% weight factor, it makes me and my colleagues at the department that just, that much more committed to voicing loudly and clearly what we have to say about affordability, because we are otherwise at the mercy of being swamped by what the 50 percenter and the 25 percenter wants to do in the region. And that, I don't think it sets well with Vermont to not be commanding its own fate, if you will, from an energy perspective. And so we don't let that happen. We're very fortunate to have people like Mr. McNamara and Mr. Wynn to speak for us in those circles and to become familiar and to master these issues and principles so that we frequently, as a state, pack a much greater punch for our weight than one might otherwise anticipate. And I might add, too, we don't do that alone. We do that in the company of many organizations, such as the one that Ms. Campbell Anderson heads up, such as Efficiency Vermont and the EIC, such as Velco, such as GMP. And part of today's discussion is really intended to open up the floor as well to the people we don't hear from quite as frequently in terms of what our policy priorities need to be at the regional level, but who are very much affected by what we do. And so I hope that it will prove as a pivot, Mr. Hughes, to ask you to come up here and to share with us what's on your mind today on the topic of regional affordability.
Great. Thanks. Thank you. My name's Thomas Hughes, and I'm the campaign director for the Energy Independent Vermont Coalition. Energy Independent Vermont includes Vermont business leaders, low-income advocates, environmentalists, economists, students, and people of faith. What draws us together is a desire to strengthen the Vermont economy, help the most vulnerable, and reduce the pollution-causing global warming. We have a plan to reduce total energy consumption and lower Vermonters' electricity bills, both businesses and residential, by 27%. The plan was crafted by business and community leaders, and it's called the Economy Strengthening Strategic Energy Exchange, or the ESX Plan. My colleague back here, Chrissy, has some additional copies of the document that I handed out to the folks up here on the panel. The plan is very simple. Put a price.
Tom, if you would just show that to the cameras of folks online.
Folks online can find it at energyindependentvt.org/essx.
Thank you so much, and I'll take that back.
Yep. The plan is very simple. Put a price on the pollution-causing global warming and return 100% of the revenues to Vermonters as rebates on their electricity bills. Vermont electricity is some of the lowest carbon in the nation, and that is a key strategic advantage for the Green Mountain State. By lowering the cost of that low-carbon electricity, the ESX Plan incentivizes the electrification of Vermont's heating and transportation sectors, which are the largest contributors to our greenhouse gas pollution problem. As Riley Allen, the deputy commissioner of the Department of Public Service, said last month in Vermont Digger, "The more affordable electricity is, the easier it is to shift energy demand from carbon-intensive transportation and building heating and transform it to electricity." Unquote. Since electric heating and transportation options are far more efficient than the polluting fossil fuels they replace, overall energy needs in Vermont are reduced as we transition to those cleaner, more affordable alternatives. There's little debate on this. In fact, on January 25th of this year, Governor Scott wrote that electric vehicles, quote, "represent a critical strategic, a critical strategy to making transportation more affordable for Vermonters while meeting our greenhouse gas reduction goals. On average, EV drivers spend $1,200 less on maintenance than roughly half of what they previously did on gasoline or diesel," unquote. And a recent Department of Public Service study found that cold-climate heat pumps save Vermonters hundreds of dollars each year. So let's make that low-carbon electricity that powers these lower-cost alternatives less expensive. As I mentioned, the ESX Plan puts Vermont on a path to reducing electricity bills by more than 25%. With the ESX rebates included on every commercial and industrial electric bill, Vermont businesses would enjoy effective electric rates 25% to 40% below the New England average, making the state more attractive to high-tech companies with good-paying jobs. Companies like Global Foundries would save millions of dollars each year on their electric and overall energy bills. Further, the ESX Plan takes note of the cold rural nature of our state and supplies even larger rebates to Vermonters with low incomes and rural Vermonters, in addition to the rebates included on every ratepayer's monthly electric, electricity bill. The concept of returning proceeds of a fee on carbon pollution to constituents is not new nor radical. ConAIG, which we're here to talk about, was instrumental in launching the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative, which has been pricing pollution in the electric sector for 10 years. Here in Vermont, those proceeds have funded weatherization, efficiency, and efficiency improvements that have delivered net savings of millions of dollars. I'm sure that the folks from Efficiency Vermont would be willing to talk about some of those savings. California prices carbon pollution, as does Quebec, consume all of Canada. The Massachusetts Senate passed a carbon pricing bill last week. National Grid, the electricity and natural gas utility in Massachusetts and New York, called for carbon pricing last week. The New York ISO is studying the benefits of the policy. And just a few days ago, a partisan group of Republicans and Democrats proposed a carbon pricing framework similar to the ESX Plan on the federal level. But let's be honest, with the current administration and Congress in Washington, there is no hope for action to reduce greenhouse gases coming from Washington, DC. The states are on their own. Vermont and all of the ConAIG states have the opportunity to step up to the plate, serve as the laboratories of democracy, and establish policies that will strengthen our own economies, help the most vulnerable, and reduce pollution. I urge you to take a good look at the ESX Plan, see the wisdom of putting a price on pollution, to fund the affordability solution. Thanks very much. Again, the full ESX Plan is available at www.energyindependentvt.org/essx. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Tom. So I'm going to go out to the audience here and say, do we have questions or comments to what Mr. Hughes just said? You're waiting for me to go first, aren't you? All right. So, oh, I do have one right here, Mr. Smith. I think politeness requires me to let you go first. Do I, do I ask you to come up here, though, to let us know what's on your mind? I'll skewer you next, Ms. Campbell Anderson.
I know it's funny.
Okay.
Hey, Doug Smith, GMP. Mine was, my question was more of just a clarification one, helping hopefully the audience follow the flow, if you will. If some of the benefits of the ESX Plan are to basically flow, if I understood you right, to flow funds, revenues from a price on carbon, and credit power customers, as well as, I think you said, low-income and rural consumers? What's the other side of the coin? If those folks are being looked out for or receiving a credit by design, just directionally, is it drivers or folks who heat their homes with oil? Or where's the money come from?
Sure. Very simply, the fee is placed on fossil fuels as they enter the state's borders. There's roughly 50 different companies that import fossil fuels to Vermont, and so the state would collect those. The Department of Public Service, in collaboration with the Vermont Utilities, would return those funds to Vermonters on a monthly basis. All of the funds received from the commercial and industrial sectors would be returned to the commercial industrial sectors as lower effective rates. So a rebate on every commercial bill by kilowatt. On the residential side, a little bit more complicated, but not too terribly complicated, follow me along here. Every Vermonter gets a rebate on their, on their electricity bill. Those Vermonters with, that live in rural parts of the state, as designated by the US Census, the census blocks that are in rural territories, would receive an additional rebate. And those Vermonters who have incomes, household incomes below 400% of the federal poverty level would receive additional rebates. The way that we would identify those low-income, or Vermonters with low-income households, would be used, expand the current energy assistance program that GMP has pioneered, along with Vermont Gas, and extend that to all utilities and extend it from 150% of federal poverty to 400%. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, thanks.
So, Tom, I have a question for you. I've scanned briefly through the list of authors for the ESX Plan, and I would ask first whether I'm correct in perceiving that among the authors, many of whom I know and know to be distinguished in their fields participating in the study, I don't see anybody from the ISO New England sphere. Is that correct?
There, I don't believe there's anybody who had experience with ISO New England. However, there were, of course, people who've interacted with the department for decades.
So my question for you is this, and coming from that voice of the 4% that is packing a big punch above its weight class. Do you have any thoughts on why it is, this is a genuine question for you, there's no agenda behind it, why it is that there isn't a representative from that sphere in the group of architects of this plan? Is that because you folks don't have access, because you aren't thinking in that regional sense? Or can you help me with that? Because it, what it matters, to me, it matters about how I use the microphone.
Sure.
Regionally, if you're not doing it through your channels.
Sure. So the ESX Plan, just a little bit of background, was developed by business and community leaders. Can I borrow your copy just for a second?
Please, yes. It's yours, I'm giving it back to you.
I'm going to leave it with you, so you can do more than scan it. So some of the business leaders, including Mark Curran, the CEO or the co-founder of Black River Produce, you're probably familiar with their distribution Black River Produce, you're probably familiar with their distribution company, over 50 diesel trucks on the road every day, collecting produce from Vermont and New England farms and delivering them to restaurants, hospitals, schools, and such. John Erickson, economist at the Gunn Institute at UVM. Dan Hoxworth, who was the executive director of Capstone Community Action. Jen Kimmich, the founder of The Alchemist. Graham Kleppner, CEO of Danforth Pooter. Karen Lafayette, advocate for the Vermont Low Income Advocacy Council. David Mears, former commissioner of the Department of Environmental Conservation. Chris Miller from Ben &amp; Jerry's. Ashley Organe from Seventh Generation. Ann Watson, Mayor of Montpelier, including a couple of others. That group came together as a group of business and low-income leaders to present this at a conference last November hosted by the Energy Action Network. I believe many of the people in the room were at that. It was primarily driven, the call for that, and the governor was one of the keynote speakers of that, along with Mayor Weinberger. The call for that meeting was to come up with solutions to meet Vermont's greenhouse gas emissions goals and our renewable energy goals, of which we are nowhere near achieving. The primary request for that was not the affordability or to find participants from the ISO community, so that's why they're not necessarily in this group. The, worth noting, there was a straw poll of the 200 or so energy and climate experts at that symposium. The Essex Plan was the, was the one selected as the perhaps the most hopeful proposal for reaching our climate and clean energy goals. It has the additional benefit of lowering Vermont electricity bills by 27 percent.
So is it fair to say, then, that one takeaway from the comment you're making today is that Vermont should perhaps consider opening a channel of communication with the ISO about plans such as the Essex Plan? Because in isolation, the Essex Plan can't move our needle appreciably on reduction of greenhouse gases or affordability. It is something that depends on a regional effect in the end.
Well, if we're talking about reducing Vermont's greenhouse gas emissions.
Well, I'm talking about the region, but go ahead.
If we want to reduce Vermont's greenhouse gas emissions, the Essex Plan would reduce Vermont greenhouse gas emissions by 15 to 25 percent by the year 2030. If we want to reduce overall regional greenhouse gas emissions, I would encourage you at the department to talk with your colleagues in ISO New York and with National Grid in Massachusetts, who are exploring carbon pricing or calling for carbon pricing, and get on that train before it leaves the station. Because this is a way to strengthen the Vermont economy. There is an advantage for going first in this, in this carbon pricing era. And that advantage is the same one that Vermont enjoyed by going first on efficiency. By creating an efficiency mandate here in Vermont and creating Efficiency Vermont, we developed products and expertise that we now export around the world and import the consulting dollars for. We should be doing exactly that same on more low-carbon technologies. And putting a price on carbon will, in a very real sense, just like Efficiency Vermont has done, create that market demand for the low-carbon technologies, creating the new industries.
So should I take, then, from that comment, that you would advocate, for instance, that the ISO change its market design in order to accommodate some of the objectives or principles reflected in the Essex Plan?
Well, the Essex Plan is, to be fair, it was crafted for Vermont.
Okay.
And as the, I think, the first page or the second page of the plan describes the Vermont energy context. And for the Vermont energy context, it's pretty simple. We import every single gallon of fossil fuels into the state at a cost of nearly $2 billion a year for Vermont homeowners and business owners. 80 percent of that $2 billion leaves the state. Not a single drop of that fossil fuel is extracted in New England. So it's not extracted in Vermont, there's, and it's not extracted in New England. There's similarities between Vermont and New England are pretty, pretty clear. New England is exporting all of its fossil fuel dollars to other states and countries around the world. And we are missing an opportunity to gain energy independence by, as one of the earlier slides showed, increasing our efficiency, expanding our renewables, and going through the strategic electrification process, which we know will be cleaner, cooler, faster, higher-tech, healthier, you name it, and it's also be less expensive.
So from that, I'm going to take a distant yes. The ISO perhaps should consider some of the principles reflected in the Essex Plan as it designs our regional wholesale market. Fair enough?
Take it away.
Okay, fair enough. Well, thank you for your comments. Do I have responses or counterpoints from anyone in the audience to what Mr. Hughes has been saying? I do not at this time. Do we have anything online?
Nothing.
Okay. So I will ask you to take your seat again, Mr. Hughes. Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the things I found particularly interesting about what Mr. Hughes was sharing with us was the reminder of the Vermont tendency to be first in things. We are first in the history of meaningfully designing policy around energy efficiency, and that is a history to be very proud of, and one that I certainly look forward to continuing in my tenure at the department. We have also had a lot of, if not firsts, and leading moments in deploying renewable energy, as we have, and there, too, is a great deal to be proud of. And so it may well be that there comes a point in time where the thinking around carbon pricing similarly becomes another moment for Vermont to herald as a first. I won't speak to that in this immediate point in time, but one of the things I've observed in my work in this discipline over the many years is the time horizons tend to be elongated. We don't achieve everything all at once in our energy policy. We do it over years, just as we plan over years. And so I think that is also a caution for some conservatism in how we make our policy decisions about energy, because we are talking about long-term trajectories. This is a thought that's never far from my mind, because among the many functions that are in my stewardship is our comprehensive energy planning over a 20-year period. And I'm always thinking about the audacity and the humility that has to come with purporting to lay plans for folks who are 20 years in the future and who are going to be living with decisions we make today. Do I, at this time, have other comments or questions that folks would like to tee up on the topic of energy affordability in the region? I'm delighted to see Mr. Westman's hand go up, I think, back there. So if I could ask you to come on down and to share with us what's on your mind, that would be great. Thank you.
Hello, for those watching at home. Thank you, Commissioner, and I think this is just such an interesting topic. All of the matters that we've been discussing this afternoon, I could probably talk about at extensive length, and so I won't, because it is a beautiful New England afternoon, and everyone who comes up to this podium is just keeping you further and further from that.
The tragedy, Dave, is that it's going to rain tomorrow and be 66 degrees, so one could wish, you could reverse that order, but go ahead.
Exactly. Enjoy while it's here, right? I think, I think my comments are, will actually be pretty, pretty straightforward. Dave Westman, Efficiency Vermont. Efficiency Vermont is providing, at its core, efficiency services as a resource for Vermonters and for New England. And I'll just outline in a few simple ways that we do that. First and foremost, efficiency reduces costs for participants, for customers. We work directly with customers, we work with market actors to get more efficient appliances and, and weatherization into people's homes and businesses that reduces their overall energy costs. And that's part of our form of performance regulation through the Public Utility Commission and working with the Department of Public Service, is demonstrating that all of our costs are being justified, not only in bill savings that are occurring for customers over time, but that they're creating real benefits to Vermonters. Which is my second point, which is that Efficiency Vermont uses the electrons that we save in our electric efficiency program and bids them into the ISO New England forward capacity market as a resource for all of Vermont and all of New England to take advantage of. And so for reference, we are bidding approximately 100 megawatts. I mean, for a small state, that's a big number, but 100 megawatts of energy efficiency resources each and every year into that forward capacity market. And I know Doug knows this term, and so does Ed, but we're essentially price-takers in this market, which means that what, which means that whatever the market clears at, we pretty much take that price. And what that does is that it actually pushes, puts downward pressure on all rates in, in New England in that forward capacity market, because we're essentially putting in what is effectively the lowest bid that you can in order to sort of clear in the auction. And so when you're putting 100 megawatts in at essentially zero cost, that has, has a negative price-suppressing effect on the auction. And so it's part of the reason why we are proud of that resource in, in, in our bid, but New England in general has over 1,700 megawatts now of energy efficiency clearing in the market. I mean, that's the size of a significant power plant, and all of that resource is going in at a price-suppressive effect, which is helping to keep forward capacity rates down. So I just wanted to point that out. Vermont plays a pretty big part in it. But what is actually, I think, and my third point, third and final point, is that our resource is actually larger than the 100 megawatts. We actually have 140 megawatts in the wintertime, because of market rules that I won't get into, but like Ed, I too enjoy those long, cloistered meetings within windowless offices on beautiful days, and I was just in one earlier this week. But the point is, is that we have 140 megawatts of resource in the winter that is not being recognized when the ISO New England is claiming that they have a fuel security and reliability issue. I mean, this is concerning to us, mostly because the auction rules essentially have us bid at whatever our resource is year-round. And just as a point of sort of clarification, frankly, it's easier to do efficiency in the winter than it is in summer, because there's not a lot of air conditioning load here, and a lot of the efficiency that we did, that we do, has a greater impact in the wintertime. And so our winter resource is about 40 megawatts, 40 percent higher than it is in the summer, which is why we can only bid in 100 megawatts in the summer. Now, if you extrapolate that across all of the other energy efficiency providers in New England and figure that they have similar kind of effects, then what you're basically seeing is that of the 1,700 megawatts of efficiency resource in the state, there's actually 40 percent more out there in the wintertime when the ISO is saying that they need it. I see that as a real failure in the, in the current market structure, and that's the, those are the comments that we've brought to the ISO, and I think it's something that is worthy of consideration. There's a lot, there's a lot more there, June, and I'm sure that.
But let me ask you this. If you could unpack just a little for the folks who don't do this every day, how it is, without delving into the rule minutia, how it is that there is this resource that is, in your opinion, not being recognized adequately by ISO, and is that something that you feel the state could be advocating for at the regional level in the name of affordability?
Yes. The answer is yes, and it does. And I do feel like we have strong partnership with the, with the state of Vermont. I think that not only with Ed's participation in these markets, but also with the Public Utility Commission's participation in the markets, we do have allies in Vermont. I do think that this issue has been raised. I also know that.
Can you, can you unpack it just a little bit so other folks can understand?
Yeah. So I'll unpack it by saying that earlier this winter, the ISO underwent what it is calling an operational fuel security analysis, which is a long sort of title for essentially figuring out, they wanted to project out in 2025, roughly, if you had a cold winter and you made some assumptions about which resources would stay online and which ones wouldn't, and what the fuels, fuel mix would look like, is the grid on a regional level sort of stable?
This is what we call the fuel security study.
This is what we call the fuel security study, exactly. And so what, what they found was, well, they did some assumptions about retirements of dual fuel, that's the, those are power plants that run on gas and oil, and they made some assumptions about, frankly, public policies around renewables and imports of renewables not being achieved, as well as not making any expectations for increased energy efficiency, which we know all of the other states are actually doing. So Efficiency Vermont, along with Synapse and a few other state and regional entities, worked on a sort of counterproposal, which the ISO actually agreed, agreed to follow through with. And so we said, look, rerun your model, rerun your analysis, assuming all of the public policy objectives around renewables are at least met or reasonably met, the, for example, the contract in Massachusetts for renewable imports, as well as the efficiency, recognizing the efficiency programs. What happens if you, what happens to this fuel security analysis? And the differences are really stark. When you just look at what the ISO modeled on their own, they had some reliability issues. And I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it's basically, you know, like hours and hours, or if not days, of rolling blackouts. But when you look at the effect of renewables efficiency and, and demand-side management on, on, on the system, all of those reliability concerns go away. And that was, that's really the main point, is that the ISO needs to have a reasonable, a reasonable expectation of all of our state's policies, at least if not being met in full, having the sort of full intent of the known policies being achieved.
All right. Dave, just one last question on that point. Can you also unpack just a little what the implications are of the advocacy that you just outlined, that from our respective purchase, we've been engaged in with the regional folks, what the impact of that is on affordability, particularly to Vermont?
I think Ed summed it up. The, the case in point today is the Mystic Plant. I think you referenced it as well. The only reason that the $500 million in additional cost-of-service payments are because the ISO thinks that there's a fuel security risk, and that if we can demonstrate that through the, you know, through Doug's long-term hedging of clean renewables, our efficiency programs, revs, contributions through, you know, new power, new renewables coming online, that we can meet that winter reliability need. If they recognize the additional 40 percent of wintertime efficiency, then we can essentially obviate that $500 million that's about to be handed over to a fossil fuel plant.
And in turn, is also going to result in rate pressure as parsed out to the respective states.
That's exactly right. And if you do the math, whatever, whatever Vermont's share of that, it would be 4 percent, right? I mean, that's.
That's 500 grand.
That's 500 grand that Vermonters would, would be paying of it.
Which I would just as soon not pass on to Global Foundries, if I can avoid it. So thank you. I appreciate that, Dave, very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
I think it's, it's good to note at this juncture that Dave alluded to the assumptions that ISO is making in the winter fuel security study, that state policies will fail. And I have to tell you that my department has been very vocal on this point in our discussions with the counterparts at the ISO level, and also with our counterpart New England states, that it's, it's got to be that state policy choices matter. After all, the participants. that it's got to be that state policy choices matter. After all, the participants in these regional markets are sovereign states, and we don't pursue these policies lightly. They arrive at through our legislative process, through our regulatory process, and they are targeted at ends that reflect our values as people. So fundamentally, it's about our ability to determine our own fates as residents of the state, whether you're a commercial resident or a participant, or a person who is a residential consumer of electricity. Our policies need to be respected, and it has been my privilege and also my challenge to make that viewpoint known in an environment at the regional level and also at the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission level, where it's not that folks are disrespectful of the states, it's not that they mean to be callous or disregarding of the choices that we're making, but it's rather that they are so very focused on what they consider to be their primary mission, which I think Global Foundries can relate to, which is reliability and adequate fuel supply. That seems to come first in their thinking, and to a lesser extent, affordability. They lose sight of the fact that they do all of this, though, as a service, if you will, to the sovereign states that participate in the region and are affected by the markets that they design. So we certainly are very vocal in talking with them about the advisability and the merit of making the assumption that state policies will fail to deliver the benefits that they're directed at, and that therefore fuel security study assumptions need to be conservative and assume that failure. We hope to be effective in pushing back a little through our advocacy on that. I have to say, these forums that we've been convening, we also did one of these in Rutland not too long ago during the Governor's Capital for a Day venture. These forums are very instructive. It's been enormously helpful to me, reassuring to hear from you folks. Some of the things that were said today are things that are familiar, but there's value in that familiarity and repetition, because I think it signifies that we are hearing you and you are hearing us. And communication of that nature is so important in order for policy decisions to enjoy legitimacy. So I thank you for that. Ed, I'm going to ask you whether we have any questions from our chat room at this point. So at this point, I'm going to take a survey of the room. We are at about the 3 o'clock mark, and I have two choices. One is to release you all to the beautiful New England day that is out there, or to take a break. And I'm inclined to take a break if there is anybody here today who has something that they've not yet expressed, that they'd like to, on topic for our meeting. If I don't see a hand shoot up, I'm going to... I saw a hand shoot up.
Question.
Yes, Ms. Campbell Anderson, yes.
Do you plan additional meetings for the state for this conversation?
So I...
What's the timeframe and your process ahead?
Thank you for that question. It brings back to me that I was remiss at the outset in not perhaps spending a little more time describing how these meetings have come about. So let me make up that ground for you. In February, Governor Scott became the Chair of CONEG, the organization that Mr. Hughes alluded to not too long ago, which is the... Help me again, Ed. This is the...
Coalition of Northeast Governors.
Thank you. CONEG is etched in my brain. I've been living it for months now, but I don't return to spelling it. Yes, it is the...
Coalition.
Consortium?
Coalition.
Consortium, coalition. It is the Coalition of New England States.
Northeast Governors.
Northeast Governors, very good. Okay. So let us get past this stumbling block. Governor Scott was elected to be the Chair of CONEG in February, and he announced almost immediately that his mission for the year would be to promote affordability in the region. And his fellow governors, which would be Rhode Island, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, Connecticut, Vermont, and Maine, were very enthusiastic about the choice of that topic. And so following that, Governor Scott founded a task force on regional affordability and promptly appointed me the Chair of that task force. And so I have been engaging with my colleagues across the region to come together with a process by which we could, in our respective states, consult with stakeholders widely to get input on what we could be doing by way of advocacy at the regional level to address affordability issues. And so in Vermont, the plan that we settled on is to have this series of forums, as well as a comment process through the department's website, and also outreach to a variety of stakeholders for meetings where we speak with them more individually about their concerns. And so today's meeting is sort of the crown jewel, if you will, Olivia, of that process, where here in Maupilier, we advertised widely, and we've also made streaming available across the state, as well as this chat function, so that at a certain point in time, Vermonters across the spectrum could join us for this conversation. But in addition to today's event, as I said a moment ago, we had an event in Rutland not too long ago, where we had a conversation similar to the one we've had today. And I expect we'll be having another one in the Northeast Kingdom on or about July 6th, I think. And there will then be other conversations scheduled with stakeholders who we've been able to identify who have shown an interest in that. And so if folks here know of folks who couldn't make it today, who would be interested in an engagement of that nature, they should please contact the Department of Public Service. That would be Mr. Nguyen sitting right here to schedule an outreach conversation of that nature. I would like to say to you that I know of other dates, but there are other, for other forums like this, or the one in Rutland, or the one in Calhoun County, but I don't have that schedule set yet. So that was the hand that shot up. Is there another one out there from anyone who'd like to continue the conversation this afternoon? Because that's what's standing between us and the breaks, and the man from Fishkill, New York, put his hand up.
I just had a couple of comments.
Yes, please.
I don't want to hold everybody else.
Oh, you're not holding folks up?
So this is more of a personal than a global foundries, but I'm struggling still with the cost of power, not just in the water. I grew up where the Marcellus gas is. I watched the prices in July 2008. Natural gas was worth $15. It's actually about $2.50, which is about 200 miles from here. So you said that a lot of ISO New England's concern is fuel supply, right? It's reliability. You're struggling with affordability. They're struggling with reliability and fuel supply. I mean, we're within 200 miles of a net... And I'm not trying to get into the natural gas versus not natural gas. That's a whole different thing, so I'm not getting there. But it just doesn't make economic sense. And I know there's a lot of New York State, but there are reasons why that is. But how can you have the most expensive power in the United States next to California, 200 miles from the cheapest gas, pretty much, at least on this continent, if not in the world? And I'm not saying I have any solutions for that. It's just a personal conflict of how can ISO New England be that far removed? And the reason I, some facts that I can add to that is, we're about 140 miles north of New York City, where the plant's located. And our energy costs are more expensive than Maltin, New York, which is above Albany, because there's economic market incentives set up to make power that has to feed in New York City more expensive. So we're in an expensive region of New York City to incent producers to bring natural gas plants into the area to feed more power into New York City. And that's for reliability, not so much affordability, but availability and capacity. And the market sort of has corrected that. So in the last five years, there's at least three mega, and you can, again, argue if you really want that in your backyard, there's three mega natural gas plants going up within 30 miles of Fishkill site. And the gas is coming from Marcellus in Pennsylvania, and it's primarily meant to feed New York City. New York City's dynamics is not that much different than Vermont, right? Nobody wants the transmission lines. Nobody wants the generation plants. But somehow that market, and again, I don't know the politics of New York, whether that's incentive or what, but somehow that market has solved the problem. It seems, as an outsider, better than ISO New England has solved the problem. So I'm not, again, I don't know whether that's, that's not a Vermont policy issue, that's an ISO New England policy issue, or that's a FERC issue, or I don't know what it is. It just makes no sense, whether you're pro-gas or anti-gas. It just makes no sense. How can you have the cheapest natural gas within 200 miles of where we're sitting, maybe 250? And we're paying the most for the energy in the United States. It's just something about the policy, or practices, or economics, or something is just not adding up. And I think, to answer the question, some of that issue, if you can't get the natural gas in New York State, that the gas here, I think, from our use is coming from Canada primarily. It's an interesting dynamic, because there's actually plants in Pennsylvania that put gas in trucks. We talk about ludicrous, put them in trucks, to put them on the highway, to drive them to Ticonderoga, because Ticonderoga is halfway between the Canadian supply from the north and the Pennsylvania supply from the south. You know, so natural gas pipelines would solve that, but I'm not so sure ISO New England wants natural gas plants within New England. I'm not sure that's part of the solution. But it just doesn't seem like somebody stepped back to 10,000 feet and said, well, what's the 20-year solution here? And I think the dynamic is, natural gas played the whole, it changed the whole energy playing field in 2009 and beyond, right? We got off the coal situation. Electric rates typically don't flow as a barrel of oil price, not in this area at least, right? It's really more based on the natural gas price. As far as the commodity portion of the transmission issue that you talked about, it's totally different, probably. It's just, again, I'm not offering solutions, but from somebody from out of town that lives kind of in the New York situation, can see what's going on in Pennsylvania, it just doesn't seem like the New England states have capitalized on that enough. And I don't know how your thoughts will, like, break into that.
I really appreciate those comments. It's interesting, because if ISO New England's board had its way, there would be a lot more natural gas pipeline capacity in the region. And I think every time that you made a declarative statement about the value of natural gas, which many people in this sphere of the discussion at the regional level recognize, you also qualified it by saying whether or not you're pro-gas, whether or not you have certain environmental policies and the like, which is an understandable reflex, but that's exactly what it turns on.
Oh, really?
And that is what the ISO New England leadership would tell you, that there are state policies that have, one way or another, had the effect of foreclosing the siting of infrastructure that comes into the region. That is not a value judgment from this Commissioner. It is simply, I offer that point by way of partial explanation or illumination on the scenario that you have very carefully and thoughtfully painted here. I would also point out that you have reminded me through your comments that a theme I have repeatedly observed in this discussion, not just today, but in the mission I've been leading now for several months, is the role of public education. Because quite clearly, people look at the facts, as you have just now, and they come to very similar conclusions. How can this be? And yet, there are reasons, there are facts, that add up to the picture that looks jumbled to all of us as we try to make sense of what we're doing here. And what I've found is that once you isolate those facts and those policies, you're confronted with choices. And so what New England has done is, it has put a premium on clean air, clean water, renewable energy, respecting the environment in citing decisions. You find this is, are, these are common themes throughout all the states, not just in Vermont. And when those things are addressed, it means that other things are foreclosed. You were quite right. All of our gas here in New England, here in Vermont, comes from Canada, which makes it that much more challenging for me as an ambassador of Vermont to be in the ISO New England conversation, saying, oh, yeah, Massachusetts should have the pipeline that's going to make market prices better for the constituencies I serve. Oh, New Hampshire should have it, you know, and the like. But I think it's fair to say that an honest conversation about these policies and these choices can't be had unless we're able to look these facts in the face. I would say one final thing in closing, as an observation to what you just said. If you recall the graph with the bar showing where Vermont falls compared to other jurisdictions, I think Vermont's price on the graph is not appreciably different from New York's.
Yeah, I couldn't read New York.
Yeah, New York's is, it's very close to it. And yet, New York is in a completely different, New York has its own ISO.
Right.
New York is an ISO unto itself. So perhaps I ought to go visit some of those board meetings to see what's being said there. But that said, I was in a meeting not too long with the ISO Board, in fact, it was just this week, where a question was asked about why we are not competitive with other regions in the country, very much along the lines of what you were just talking about. And the ISO Board's answer was, well, because of state policies like renewable energy that push our prices up. And the rejoinder to that was, well, if that's the case, does that mean that we're ahead of other states in adopting these policies? And the answer back was, well, in addition to California, yes, very much so. And so then the follow-up question to that was, well, so how do we change that? And the general consensus in the room was, well, first, other states have to get serious about renewable energy. First, other states have to get serious about controlling greenhouse gas emissions. First, other states need to catch up to where we are. The unfortunate implication of that, though, is that when other states do catch up, as many people in this thought community maintain they ought to, one could expect that the prices on that graph will become higher across the board. And then there wouldn't be quite the same gap in competitiveness and affordability as exists today. So I thank you for the thoughtfulness with which you brought up your comments. It does, as I said, remind me that there's an informational component that we owe the public in this matter, so that the public can be sure to let us know what its best thinking is on affordability. Do I have other observations or comments in the room at this point? I have spent many years being a hearing officer for the Public Utilities Commission. I know when my audience believes it has been heard, due process has been served. And so I'm going to conclude now that that's the case. And thank you very much for your attendance and participation today. It has been a privilege. I thank you.